Welcome everyone to the November fourteenth, twenty twenty-three joint work session of the City Council, also acting as the redevelopment agency and the municipal building authority. Please let the record reflect that all council members are present with the exception of Member White, who I believe is online. Oh, yes, I see you. There she is. And then Councilmember Lopez is asked to be excused. Think we will review the agenda first, the special city council meeting. So we have a couple of acknowledgements, the Native American Heritage Month and the National Homeless Youth Awareness Month, and that'll be with the diversity commissioners. Then we have a recognition for the honorary mayor of Christmas Village, which makes me very warm and cozy with my hoodie on. Then we have minutes, and then we have consent item of Ogden Trails Network Committee appointment, someone in the second district, which is very exciting.
I knew it could be done. It's a miracle. It's a great thing.
Did you recruit this person or they just applied?
Personally did not.
Oh, awesome. Well, I mean, awesome, just because it was something that applied.
I was very happy to see that that happened. It's great.
And then we have a public hearing on the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four budget amendment. If anybody has any questions about that. And then we have the flood hazard regulations. Any questions? No. Then we have reports from administration. Oh, yeah, we decided in leadership to remove the snow removal parking amendments ordinance at this time to do some additional outreach and to understand a few questions that we had outstanding about it. One of my challenges with the proposed ordinance was that I just don't know how it's going to impact our residents. I just wasn't really sure how it's going to impact. And then also, we just had some additional questions. For example, you know, we were talking about the state roads. I did see in this part of the packet that we do have the list of the streets that the mayor and administration have already, you know, decided that would be exempted. And I asked Glenn if he wouldn't mind us making a map so we can kind of see what that looks like. But then also, we weren't sure about state streets or other entity streets.
And I did get an answer to that. It will not apply to the state roads. So Harrison, Washington Wall, and I guess part of Twenty-Fourth Street and Thirty.
And Thirty. Okay, so that's, yeah, that's good to know. So that makes it a little bit like the snow route. Well, the opposite of the snow route, where people could park on all of those streets. Great. So that's good to know. So we had a great meeting, actually, with the representative Kevin Lyons from the flash, flash survey, flash vote, sorry, flash vote. And he's creating a survey that we're hoping to have out by early next week. And then we'll get the results pretty quickly by that first week in December. And they'll have, we're reviewing the questions, and then they'll have the scientific group, obviously, that represents a broad spectrum or a random, I don't know exactly how it works, but it's, you know, it's the scientific group that's on the panel that will respond. And then we talked about, we can open the survey up to others as well in the community so that we all could share it too on our social media site, just so people will know that we're going to be doing outreach for flash vote. So they'll be able to show us the results for the broader survey of all people that answered, and then break it down by different groups based on that, and then also have the scientific group so we can kind of see the difference between those two different groups. So I thought that was a really fun idea because then we can get the word out about how we're doing the survey and doing outreach to community members. But then also, that might also help them recruit additional people to be part of the panel that's ongoing over time, so that people know that we're using it that way. So I think it's an exciting way to utilize that tool on the first time we get to. If anybody has any questions about that.
I had a question when, you know, that came out in the leadership notes. And I think depending on how a survey is presented, in many ways, dictates how the results are going to come back. And so I guess, I guess I just have a little question that remains about what kind of questions will we ask? And, you know, to get a, to get a broad spectrum of, I know that if we ask it a certain way, you're going to get everybody that's going to hate it and they're going to reply.
Yeah, we had a great question like, hey, how do you feel about this? Well, it's really awful. I mean, yeah, you know, or whatever, how does it impact you? But yeah, so we have a draft version of some of the questions. I'd be happy to share it with you all to give feedback, but it will be a quick turnaround. So if you want to do it, make sure you do it quickly. And then they asked, we have a lunch joint leadership meeting this week, and we thought we could ask the administration to think about if there's questions they'd like to add to it as well. Because certainly, I could be totally wrong. I could, I mean, I admit that I could be totally off base that this is going to have a bigger impact than what I think it is. And there might be, you know, a lot of people that are really supportive, like many of you are like, hey, we should have done this a long time ago. So, you know, I'm, I'm open to that. So I don't intend for it to be a skewed survey of any kind.
Can I, can I man a little or, I'm sorry?
Well, you just said they could add questions. That is not exactly true because we do want to keep it really short.
Right.
So that's the whole point of, of this, this method, I guess. But they, you know, will certainly take input on the questions that we have.
Right. I just meant like if there was something the administration maybe wanted to ask about a different, a specific area or something like that. So we have a variety of questions that have been put out there, like just asking more generally, how often do you park on the street, you know, something like that. Some of the other ideas that we had were, I can look at the questions now. I didn't have a chance to review them before the meeting. But they are experts in doing this, so I think that they will try to be as scientific and objective as possible. Because it's not my intention to skew the boat. Although I think that when you're sharing the survey information with different groups of people, we all probably have different connections in the community. So I can imagine that one person sharing it with a broader community might have a group of constituents that might live in a different area that might be more impacted than people in other areas. And that's something that he also mentioned that they can do is gather that information about what area the people are living in that are responding from the survey, too.
As I reread the proposed ordinance, I, I think I made some assumptions when they were making the presentation that, that wasn't accurate.
And that was some of the stuff we were talking about, too, like what does it really say and what does this mean?
And so I, I do have, you know, when, when Councilmember Vice Chair Ritchie sent that little text thing from what you got from South Ogden, I thought, boy, you know, that maybe could fit us better than just a blanket. You can't park on the street between two and six between November first and March fifteenth. Doesn't matter what the weather is.
Right.
And, and I, I think I would really hope that, that we could maybe look at that particular aspect a little closer.
Yeah, that definitely came up in the conversation, too, just these different questions that hadn't occurred to us because we just read it one time.
I kind of thought that all those three bullet points that they had were, these things all had to be in place, but it's just each one of them is on their own, and I think I just misunderstood, so.
Yeah, and I think, you know, the bigger.
You weren't the only one either, I think, yeah. But a lot of us, I think, looked at it that way, as a cumulative thing, not as an individual item, so.
I think just different questions occurred to us as we were, you know, even just the state road thing, like, oh, well, does that qualify for not allowing anybody at Weber State to park on the street? That'll be a huge impact, or, you know, or whatever. And it doesn't mean that there's something wrong necessarily with what's written. It's just we need more time to talk about it and understand it before we're ready to consider it as an ordinance.
Well, just, just to go along with that point, you know, Louise made the point, so did you, that we are kind of uncertain as to how this is going to impact people. And it, I, I think people can adapt temporarily, you know, like, okay, I guess, no, I guess I've got to figure out what to do with my car. And but if they do it every night, that's going to be really challenging. And I just look, look around since last Tuesday, where are all the cars parked? And where are they going to go if we require this? And, and I don't have the answer for the second part of that.
Yeah, and I think kind of what I was thinking too, when I was looking at the Provo one, I felt like at least in that one, there's specific routes that you know you have to be off on, but then there are other places you can park in the meanwhile. Like if you can't park on that one main road, you can park on the side street there right next to it. And I guess in my thinking, we have a list now of, I think it's about fifteen streets or areas that are exempt. How much longer is that list going to be before pretty soon it's like, how are the name, how are people even going to know when they're trying to park? Are we putting up signage on it? Or, I mean, it just seems like it would be hard to communicate, so a lot of questions.
The thing that I liked about the South Ogden one is they said, okay, if it's snowing, park on your lawn until the snow is clear. You know, okay, we can, we can do that.
Possibly, but I'm thinking even in the valley, I mean, I consider myself kind of in the valley. Last year, my yard at a certain point would have had so much snow, I don't know how my car would go on it and then back off, you know, perhaps.
No can be moved. That's what the whole point of this whole thing is, you know, we can move.
See, you would shovel your yard so that you can get your car.
That would happen.
Didn't think about that.
Yeah.
If you don't want to get a ticket, yeah, I mean, if it's between that and fine, I think you'd make adjustments, that's my guess.
I just think there's so many people, we don't know how it's going to impact them. I, and I could be, like I said, I could be totally wrong. Maybe it's not going to bother anybody. Maybe everybody's like, yes, let's do this. It's great. Well, we'll find out from the survey. But we don't have that information right now. We do not, we don't know how it's going to impact people.
So do we have, like, a go-no-go number? Like, I mean, if it comes back and fifty-two percent of the people are in favor of it or fifty-two percent are not in favor of it, are we like, nope? Or yes? Or, I mean, what's our goal with the survey?
To understand how it impacts the community. We don't have any clue right now how it impacts people.
So give me a sample question.
I can read it for you, the ones, and these are just samples. I just got it at eleven o'clock today.
I mean, how often do you park on the street?
In the last twelve months, about how often have you or your household parked a car on your street overnight? And there's possible different types of answers. Not at all to a few times, about once a month to once a week, more than once a week, not sure. Or alternate is never, almost never, occasionally regularly, I'm not sure. And another example would be the city of Ogden could potentially improve snow plowing in some areas of the community by requiring residents to move their cars off of streets during the winter, which is more important to where you live, being able to park a car on a street, having better snow plowing on my street, or not sure. So they're kind of, they're trying to be kind of general and talk about the issue without saying, are you for or against just this particular issue?
And then does it mention in there that we're trying to do it this year or this winter? Okay.
It, on one question, it has a date, you know, about just the dates, but it doesn't have specifically this year. But also, the administration said they were going to roll it out slowly and give people warnings in the beginning. Anyways, we didn't think a month delay would be that big of a deal. Maybe it'll snow this weekend, I don't know, but we don't have the same amount. Yeah, it said maybe Sunday, some flurry. The ski resort would like to see it, right? Yeah, and we'd love any thoughts of, you know, if you'd like to look at the questions, you'd be welcome to look at them. I don't think we want it to be, they'll limit how many questions.
You know, those two didn't sound, I, I think that does kind of, you know, plow down the middle of, of the road that you, to use the fun for the, for the question, you know, I think those two kind of, kind of parse the, the middle.
And then, yeah, the third example, this might speak a little more. If the city were to restrict parking during the winter, November first to March fifteenth, which of the following potential rules do you think would make most sense? No overnight parking from two to six AM, no street parking when significant snow is forecast, no street parking when it's snowing. So there's several options. So trying to be, you know, just get some information back about what the people think. And we can decide. Yeah, and we can decide what the threshold is. I mean, many people are already deciding right now whether they agree or disagree with it. And you can just also use this information to make more of a educated decision.
So I have a quick question. So how do we take into account what Vince was saying about the, you know, snowplows hitting other cars? How do we take into account, is it okay that your car gets hit by a snowplow if it's on the street kind of question?
I don't know. We can ask them about that if they can add a question like.
I just don't, I don't, I mean, it's, 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 again, it's, there's, there's reasons why we're doing it. It's not because we just think that it's a great idea to bother residents, but there's other reasons why we're doing it. And so I guess my question is, are we asking those kind of questions? And, and I just, that was a facetious question. Please, don't.
I mean, we can definitely add something like that.
Please standard examiner, don't, don't quote that in the paper. But I was trying to get that, my point across is, is there's reasons why they're doing it and why they've brought it to us, and I guess maybe we need to make sure that those kind of questions are in there.
Yeah, or we consider why we want to do it, and then we consider how it impacts people, and then we can make that decision. I don't think anybody's going to say it's okay if a plow hits my car. But I mean, yeah, they can come up with some question like, what's more important to you? Your car's well-being, plowing the streets? I don't know. I can't make it above, off the fly.
I, I think what you're trying to communicate and what you're trying to accomplish is avoiding an us-against-them situation. I don't think that's what any of us should be shooting for. The point is, we've got a street safety issue, we've got an employee safety issue, but we also have some real constraints on a number of properties. So I think my hope is that we're creating a scenario where we're putting an ordinance in place that's good for the city, but we're not doing it in a way that is like just dropping it on people and creating a dynamic of us against them. It's.
That seems to me the perfect thing to use the survey tool for. What else are we going to be using it for?
Yeah, I'm, I'm.
I don't know, you know, why else we would do it. And this is a quick turn, you know, something that's really quick. We're not doing like a community survey where we're knocking on doors and all that stuff. We're going to try the tool out and see if it works.
One other thing I think it would be very beneficial is since we've learned through this fact-finding process that we are certainly not the only community that's, that's already put this in place, we could go learn from the mistakes of others. You know, we could, we could poll the people that are already doing it and see what kind of a, what kind of hiccups they had as they, you know, implemented that ordinance in their city. And, and I, I think we're going to learn some things that, you know, that other people already, already experienced. And that may be more valuable than, than a hypothetical to a, to a citizen, you know.
I liked, Janine had a great suggestion of thinking about the areas of the city, you know, just really big chunks, like above Harrison, between Washington and Harrison, and, you know, like the west side, you know, not thinking about super specific areas. I mean, that's what they're already doing by pointing out different areas of challenge, but just sort of more broad areas to kind of divide up the response. So it might be different, well, maybe we have a different policy for each of those areas. I don't know. We'll see. Thank you. Thanks for your patience with that. And so then we have the fire alarm amendments, fire code amendments. If anybody has any questions or concerns about that.
I, I have one question. So we asked the fire or the police department to reach out to the alarm companies. Is this something where we need to be doing the same thing, only the fire department reaching out to the alarm companies to let them know of this policy change?
We don't have anybody here from fire to answer that right now, Marcia, but that's a good question for when they make the presentation in the meeting.
Yeah, we'll have Chief Matthew and then also Fire Marshal Brown here for the presentation in the public meeting.
Yeah, I just know we went through some, they went through some, you know, pretty decent reach out, air, reach engagement with those.
Yeah.
So maybe that'd be awesome. Thanks.
Now we have new business, the Community Renewable Energy Program Agreement that will be something to discuss whether the council would like to adopt that resolution. Any questions or anything you'd like to say, Janine?
Is Janine presenting? Are you presenting?
Janine's presenting.
Yes.
And then we have the Elected Officials Compensation Commission, which Janine will also be presenting. Questions about those? Okay, great. That is all. Okay, well, first up on my agenda for the work session is the Development of City Sustainability Plan. I'm guessing Lorenzo is going to present about that. There, sorry, please do. Welcome.
All right. It's my first time in, in the hot seat here, so excited to be here. Thanks for giving me some time just to talk about this, what I think is a really, really important thing that the city is considering doing. So I'll just dive right into it. My name's Lorenzo Long. I'm the Sustainability Coordinator for the city. Just been here since, since January, so coming up on a year and done a lot of really cool things in that time. So just wanted to talk a little bit about if Ogden were to develop a sustainability plan, what would that look like? What are kind of the options, the timeframes and that sort of thing? So go ahead and get this presentation up here. I'll get it. No worries. All right, we can just head on into the next slide if you'd like. Oh, I can do it. All right, sweet. Sweet. All right. So just wanted to start off by recognizing some of the sustainable actions that we're already taking as a city. So the Energy Wise Ogden Strategic Implementation Plan, which was something back in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, and we're kind of in the implementation and progress tracking phase of that. So that strives to basically hit energy reduction goals as a city in various different sectors. We are doing a fleet electrification pilot program, which is grant-funded by the, like, the Energy Efficiency and Conservation Block Grant, it's a formula grant. So we've had some money to use for that. So we're, we're basically pursuing just a little pilot program for electrifying the fleet. I'm sure you guys have all seen the construction in the parking lot for the, well, the, the construction that's going on there, because we're putting in some EV chargers that'll be open to the public, a couple of level-two dual-port stations. They're not quite ready yet. We're just waiting on the hardware to arrive. Once, once those are ready, then we'll, we'll get them running. We have a Natural Resources and Sustainability Stewardship Committee that's been active for several years now, and they're really motivated right now, and they've formed several subcommittees for various issues. It's pretty exciting. And then we have myself and also a Water Conservation Coordinator on staff, which I think is really great as well. So just a couple of benefits of creating a sustainability plan. It basically, Ogden, as you saw in the previous slide, has been doing a lot of sustainability-related things, but they're kind of scattered throughout various departments, different people have been working on them, some have been completed, some not. So this would allow us basically to establish unified goals, incorporating existing city plans and things that we're already working on. So I think that's one of the main benefits there, just it gets us organized. And it also allows us to set our own personalized targets and vision. So what we think is best for Ogden rather than, you know, any external forces, you know, implementing those sort of targets for us, so we can make it, make it unique for Ogden, make it work for us. It'll increase community resiliency amidst future-changing conditions, which I think is really important. It'll also save money through energy efficiency. We're already seeing that in some previous upgrades that Ogden has done, for example, putting some LED lighting across the city, saving a lot of money on that. So just basically doing more of that will save more, more money just by being more energy efficient. It'll help us to preserve our outdoor tourism, and it'll also help us contribute to cleaner air, which is, I think, really important to everyone. So when you're developing a sustainability plan, there's a couple of different general types that you can pursue. So one would be a climate action plan, and what that is, is it basically focuses solely on reducing your greenhouse gas emissions. That's its sole purpose, and you just figure out how can we, how can we lower this? Whereas you could also expand it a little bit into more of a sustainability plan, which incorporates other elements of sustainability, such as tree canopy, air quality, water availability, all of that sort of stuff. So it's a little bit more broad, and both are good. There's no, you know, good, better, best, anything here. It's just whatever's best for the city. And that, that chart there just kind of outlines a couple of the different, or the differences of the plans. And so typically, and I'll talk about this in a later slide, sustainability plans do take a little bit longer. They're a little bit more robust. You do more outreach, you got to do more research, more data gathering. Whereas climate action plans can be implemented relatively quicker. Still, you've got a good, good amount of time to, to develop that. And it'll also just, they have various levels of community outreach as well, but you'll still do community outreach for any, any plan that, that, you know, you decide to develop. Okay, so the other element to consider here is whether you want to pursue a city plan or a community plan. So essentially, the city plan would be Ogden saying, okay, we're going to create a sustainability plan, kind of like how a, a business does, where you look at, you know, Ogden City facilities and operations and, you know, properties and things like that, and you create a sustainability plan that encompasses what, what we control there. Or you can essentially expand that to cover Ogden City within the Ogden City boundaries, including, you know, everything that's inside there. And so that's a lot more broad, takes a lot more time, more outreach, more funding, but you do everything all at once, so.
Can I ask a follow-up question? Just real quick. I'm just curious and whether there is like a citywide sustainability committee of any sort that goes outside of the municipal city. I mean, I know we have our committee, but is there any group that is meeting more broadly across Ogden in particular, or maybe even the county?
Not that I know of. There may be, but not that I'm involved with or that I know of.
It would probably be involved.
I would hope so.
If it existed, I would hope so, yeah. I was just curious. I just didn't know if there was one.
Yeah, and I think that would be something important to create moving forward with any of these plans. So there is, you know, one basic common step that I wanted to note here, which is, you know, whatever way you go about it, whether that's just city operations or if you go citywide, one of the first steps is to create a greenhouse gas emissions inventory, which essentially gives us a baseline to say, okay, here's where we're at, and then it allows us to set accurate and achievable targets for, for reduction. So what approach is best for Ogden? It just, it depends. So some local governments just decide to do a focused climate action plan to start because it's a lot easier. And then later on, as you've kind of gotten your planning chops for sustainability, and you have a little, you know, you kind of know what you're doing, you can expand that and add those other elements to create a more robust, comprehensive sustainability plan. However, other governments may prefer to kind of look at all the issues from the start and just jump right in and just go for it and develop that robust plan from the start. And again, there's no right or wrong option. It just depends on what the city feels like is, is best at this moment in time. So what does the process look like? Essentially, I would be kind of the point person leading us through the planning process, but there would be a big city team behind it. So it would, it would require participation basically across all city departments and as well as city council. And we would basically do internal, external engagement, and you would develop that plan, kind of like this process show, this graphic shows here. It would take about one to two years, depending on, again, Kind of like this process show, this graphic shows here, it would take about one to two years, depending on again, what the scope is that you decide to, that we decide to pursue. But essentially, we're in the middle of this graphic here, this pre-milestone planning. So we're in that kind of make a commitment phase, and then we got to get organized as, as a city. So, you know, if we decide to do this, then we would, you know, get representation from all of the city departments to be kind of like you were mentioning, Councilmember Traburka, to create somewhat of a, a steering committee internal, maybe you get some external partners in there as well. You have participation from city departments so that everyone knows what's going on and we're kind of unified as we move forward. And we're making sure that we're not, that there's no gaps in that planning process, that we're not missing something. And so that everyone's just kind of on the same page. Once you get organized, then you do what milestone one there says, which is essentially you're conducting that sustainability assessment, which includes a greenhouse gas emissions inventory, as well as just figuring out again, what are we already doing? You know, we have, we have all these plans that we're working on, so perhaps there's elements of sustainability that are already being incorporated. And we don't need to duplicate that. We just need to figure out that, you know, we're doing that and we will put that into our assessment. So kind of again, figuring out where we're at. Then you take that data and you're just trying to establish goals. So here's where we're at, here's where we want to be, here's our, here's our goals. Then you develop the actual sustainability plan, which says this is how we're going to get there. And which gives you basically implementation measures. And that's what milestone four is, where you are actually working towards those goals. And then kind of like we are in with the Energy Wise Strategic Implementation Plan, where we're at milestone five for that, which is we're evaluating our progress, we're reporting our results. So we're a little bit further along in that plan. But that's, that's how you would do it. So that's kind of a little overview of, of the process. And again, just wanted to reiterate, it's really important with a sustainability plan that we're all working together. So any, any successful sustainability or climate action plan, it's going to require buy-in from the city council, the mayor and many departments across city administration. And so just an important step, I think, would be to, in launching the process, would be a joint resolution passed by the city council and endorsed by the mayor. Because that would establish the sustainability plan as a high priority city objective that we're united in pursuing. So that's just a quick little presentation and I just wanted to ask if there's any questions or just comments.
Any questions?
Yeah, I appreciate your presentation. I've been, you know, kind of working through my head, kind of what, what it means. Some of it's a little bit nebulous, I think. As, as, that's all it can be at this point, I suppose, but when you start talking about, you know, the city can do what in the city operations, but extending out from that, I get a little anxious about, you know, there's a lot of approaches. There's the stick and the carrot, you know, and, and, and I certainly would not be in favor of the stick approach to any of this stuff. You know, people are pretty reasonable generally and, and will do what they feel like it, it, it helps. You know, makes them feel good about what they're doing. But, and so I, I guess I just didn't, if you wanted to comment on that, I'd, I'd love to know what you're thinking.
Yeah, I think that's something important to remember is that it, when we're developing a sustainability plan, if we did go that route that you were mentioning, where we're doing more than just city operations and facilities, we would be doing a, a pretty robust public engagement program parallel to this in developing the plan. So we would have stakeholders representing various different sectors in the community, different community groups, demographics. And we would basically try to make the plan in such a way that it represents the best interests of the city and its residents. So I don't think it would be something where we'd be, you know, slapping down this plan and saying, here's this new rulebook, you know, for everything you can't do. It would be more of a collaborative development process with the city and, and the city residents.
Well, yeah, maybe it's those, those simple questions. So are we talking about, okay, everybody's got to have LED light bulbs before whatever date, or I, I don't know. I'm, I'm just not sure what this really means. You know, what would we possibly do that would impact our residents' day-to-day life? That they couldn't just choose to do anyway?
Yeah, I think that would be a, a part of the, the planning process would be figuring out, yeah, what, what are those actions? Because at this point, we don't, we don't really have anything set in stone or any ideas as to what we would either ask residents to do or anything like that, but it could be entirely, I guess, carrot-based. It could be. It, it doesn't necessarily, if we do a sustainability plan, it doesn't necessarily mean there has to be, you know, these sticks all along the way, but specific actions. I, I guess we're just not really to that point yet to know what that would be. But there are examples of cities across Utah that have sustainability plans or variations thereof. Because again, this is kind of a spectrum of different ways you can go about this. So I'm happy to share some of those plans and you can kind of take a look at what they're doing. I've got a list of them that I can send to you, so.
I think.
I was going to say, my question would be, you know, we're looking at a pretty heavy lift with the general plan. Is this something that could be incorporated as part of that overall effort, or I mean, that if we're doing it independent or separate, is there a little bit of a planning overload? That's not possible for rich, but.
Yeah. Oh, you have to turn your mic on. And all I was going to say in response to that too is that when we did the energy wise, whatever the other ones called, I sat on that steering committee and what was really fun about that was the consultants, which I think Lorenzo would probably play, or other people on the sustainability committee could play is give a list of options of things like that other communities have done or that has a big impact. And then you can choose, you know, to include in the plan those different things. And some of them have to do. Like I'm just trying to think of examples from that plan, like helping people connect with the resources to improve the efficiency of their own homes, these free resources that are in the community, you know, or Weber State hands out the LED bulbs, right? So it's, I don't know if it would be more about like, I don't think we would have the perspective of like pushing on people that they have to do something, but it'd be more like a goal, like, hey, let's give out X amount of these resources to certain community members. And then if you meet that goal, then that would be part of it. So it could be like infrastructure kind of level, then it could also be down to the individual level, but it could be based more on things that you could provide people to use, not necessarily making people use it, if that makes sense.
Yeah, that, that's, that's, that's a great explanation. Thanks for that. Yeah. For example, if you wanted your citizens to bike more, then perhaps part of the plan is how do we, how do we make biking better for our citizens to just make them feel safer on the roads or something like that, you know, so it's something that it's, we, we want the citizens to do something. You know, which in this case, in this example would be to bike more, but yeah, how do we, how do we make that easier and more comfortable for them? And mainly safety for bike, biking, I would think, actually.
Okay.
So I just have a, a, a quick comment. Lorenzo, thank you very much for a plan. I think as a process person, what isn't measured, isn't managed? And if we don't even have a plan to get measurements, then we'll never be able to manage it. So I really appreciate that you have dug in and done this, and I know it takes a while, but thank you for doing the good work.
Thank you. And I wanted to answer your question as well about planning overload or how we can potentially incorporate that into the general plan. I would love to see sustainability incorporated into the general plan process. So I'm definitely an advocate for that. We should do that. I don't know if it would be as comprehensive as we would need to, but we could definitely use that as an opportunity to complement the, the sustainability plan effort. And I know we're also doing the development code update as well, so, you know, kind of getting involved in that. It's a similar process that I'd also like to have sustainability involved in, so, which I've already been looped into some of those things. So we're doing good.
There are definitely. Yeah, there's definitely elements in the general plan that touch upon sustainability, water, landscaping, those kinds of things, so. Yeah, just put it all in there.
Good luck with the planning overload. No, I, I think Marshall just touched on the comment I was going to make. So when I think about sustainability, I think a lot bigger than, well, a lot broader, I should say, than climate action and greenhouse gas emissions. I want, we need to be thinking about our rivers, our riparian habitats, our wildlife, our water, water quality, water quantity. How does our infrastructure impact that? And how are we finishing stormwater before it enters our waterways? Where do we have wetland habitats that are cleaning these waters before discharge, et cetera? So those are things that are a lot less divisive and polarizing. But they're all things that impact our day-to-day lives and they're actually things that we have a lot more impact on locally. So I would hope that if we're talking about sustainability, we're also talking about those things. And then the comment I really liked about that you guys were all making was you call it carrot and stick. We call it in my industry, so I've been in natural resource management for 23 years, and we call it the voluntary and incentive-based approach. There's a culture that people don't like to be told what they have to do, but they love to be told what they can do. And they love to get to work on the things that they can do. And so if we can focus more on a voluntary and incentive-based approach, I think we'd be a lot more successful. And there's a lot of examples I can share where we've leveraged that approach far more effectively than the required approach in statute and ordinance.
I love the way you presented it. I, that's exactly what I was trying to get at and didn't have the right words. I, I appreciate your expertise in that field that has brought the right attitude to this. I, because I absolutely, that's kind of what I was kind of getting at. I, I, I think we've absolutely got to make this something that is, you know, it is enabling rather than compelling.
It creates more unity and actually a momentum behind it. So the Endangered Species Act, for example, one of the requirements that they have to consider is an agency at the Fish and Wildlife Service, but also as courts is regulatory certainty, which means you write one law at the federal level and apply it to all states. We pushed back as a lot in Western states and said, we can do this voluntary incentive-based. And they said, great, prove it. And we did. So there's tons of examples that it works better.
Well, and kind of to build on that too, I think, I mean, not to overload planning, but I can kind of see why it would be beneficial to have a city municipal plan for what we do. And then partnering with great organizations like Weber State and natural habitat people. And we have great companies in the area too that are doing a lot of sustainability. So I think there could be a lot of stuff you learn from different stakeholders too, that possibly build a, a broader community plan, but it wouldn't really necessarily be driven by the city. It might just be stakeholder groups that would come together. And I don't know who the backbone of that would be, like who would convene it. That's why I was wondering if there was already some group out there that kind of would do that, because I know Weber State has plans, I know Intermountain has plans, I'm sure, you know, like a lot of different people have their own plans, but there's probably ways that we could align and partner with some of those organizations to have double the impact, you know?
Definitely, definitely. Yeah, I think one of the really cool things about just this opportunity is that it's kind of, we get to choose what we do, you know? No one is really forcing us to do one thing or the other. So ultimately, we do have whatever, you know, whatever we, whatever way we want to go, we can. And, you know, because for example, not all sustainability issues pertain to us here in Ogden. For example, we're not next to an ocean. So sea level rise is not a thing we need to worry about, whereas other people, they do. I guess that's true. Maybe not right now. Maybe, maybe in the future. I don't know. That would be wild. But yeah, so we get to figure out what affects us here in Ogden, what's important to us here in Ogden. You know, maybe that is water, maybe it's air, and we want to really, really focus on those, or maybe it's something else. And we get to figure that out by working with the public and working together as a group and really creating something that's unique and effective for Ogden. So I think it's a really cool opportunity.
What's your timeline?
That's a great question. I think that essentially the, the step that I was discussing about getting organized as a city, I, I would say starting that as soon as possible. That's something that we can just get, get right started on. As far as the, the official and symbolic kind of launch of this, you know, whether that's a joint resolution or something else, I think, you know, perhaps waiting till the new year would be a good time to kind of do that symbolic gesture there. But then as far as developing the plan, again, it depends on what we really want to do, which avenue we want to pursue, what scope we want to pursue, but it could take anywhere between, you know, one to two and a half years, just depending on, on what we're doing and how many people we have working on it. And, you know, that, that sort of, that sort of thing. So a lot of variables there, honestly.
And just last comment, I, I, again, thank you for being here to, to share this information. I think it's been very helpful. I, I personally would probably favor the taking the approach from the city as the entity first before reaching out to the, to the public. It just feels like there's so much that can be done there first. And then as far as what Chair Traburka was indicating, as far as having a, a group of, you know, putting together this group, if it doesn't exist, maybe this is an opportunity for Ogden to lead and, and start that group and, and reach out to the Weber State and to those different organizations, so.
Definitely.
I, I just want to make one, one really quick comment, and I think one of it is what when I think of sustainability and when we, when I first thought about this, I, I know it was pretty, pretty primary in what my thoughts were, but I think more than anything, if you focus on even just a small piece of making Ogden more resilient, whether that's the water grid, the, you know, the electric grid, reducing flooding, you know, those kinds of things where if you can just figure out how to make us more resilient, that obviously equates to property taxes and people not having to pay more because we're having to rebuild roads or we're not, you know, we're not having to, you know, do a lot of rebuilding. So if you just even focus on one small aspect of even just being a resilient Ogden, I think we'll, we'll come ahead a lot quicker than, than we, we might without a plan. So thanks.
Thank you. Yeah, anything is better than nothing. Absolutely. You know, if we can do anything here, it's, it's better than nothing. But, um, yeah, again, I'm excited. I think this is something, you know, that, that could be very, very good for Ogden. So, yeah, excited for, for whatever direction we ultimately decide to go.
Love it. Well, and I think too, I do a lot of plans like this. And I think it's also helpful because then if you, a grant opportunity or other kind of opportunities come up, you already have something ready to build on, but I'm trying to recreate it in that moment.
Absolutely. A lot of grants right now, a lot of federal grants, a lot of money floating around. Those are trickling down to states as well, which will then create their own grant programs. So there's definitely some opportunities there for us.
Great. So glad to have you.
You and I need to talk more. Like there's so many ideas running through my mind right now for you and for us. The grant opportunities are astronomical. We just got into a cycle where there's so much opportunity that we have to change our complete business model to manage grants so that we can manage and create leverage opportunities.
Well, let's talk, definitely.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah. Let's talk more.
For sure.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Hey, up next, we're very excited to hear about the Union Station Centennial Celebration, which I just put my little sticker on my computer. Be excited. Thanks for gifts. It's so cool. I know. I just broke it while I tore it. So cool. I mean, not very often. That's amazing. Welcome. Would you two like to introduce yourselves to the people, maybe online?
Sure. Christy McBride, Arts, Culture and Events Division Manager for the City of Ogden.
And I'm Hope Aggitt. I'm the museum curator at Union Station.
I think you guys all met Hope and Sam when you were on your tours earlier this year, so. We are pleased to be here. I'm super excited.
Well, thank you.
Super excited to share with you what's, what we've been planning and what to expect for the new year coming up in celebration of Union Station and also extremely honored. This team's been working on this for a long time and even before them, the history and the research that's gone into the planning has been years in the making and a hundred, actually. So, so it, it, it may look, it's kind of hard to, to lay this plan out there and, and kind of bring the genie out of the bottle and have it not look like a long list of events. But there was a lot of thought into creating a program, a year full of programming that can bring and invite the community in to celebrate Union Station in their way, instead of just putting together a bunch of events or one big event. We wanted to create programming that allowed people the opportunity to come in in their own space and time and experience Union Station and celebrate the hundred years in, in their cultural ways, in their memories. And of course, the building itself is, is celebrating its 100th year in existence. So we've got a short slideshow here for you to kind of show you what we've got in the works and what you can expect for the new year. I'm going to let Hope give you a little short background of Union Station's history.
I'm really happy to be here and here to talk about our favorite building in Ogden, Union Station. So just as a, the background, I wanted to share a little bit more about this history. So as many of you know, the Transcontinental Railroad was finished in Promontory Point in 1869. And Ogden got its very first train station in 1870, in January 1870, following that. That, that picture is there, that little two-story building. It's made out of clapboard. It's a violent shade of red, which you can't see in the picture. They, which you can't see in the picture. Um, and it was a very, very small station that Ogden was not very proud of. Um, they were embarrassed that people would be received into this tiny little station that got put up. Um, so the people of Ogden worked together, um, and eventually got this second building with the large clock tower. Um, and that building was completed in eighteen eighty-nine. Um, it was a beautiful building made out of standstone and it received a lot of those early passenger traffic in Ogden's really formative years in the eighteen nineties and the nineteen hundreds. So if you wanted to put the next page, thanks. Um, unfortunately that building quickly became outdated. People really started disliking the, the building. Apparently had very bad ventilation. Uh, but change came very, very quickly for the building. Um, it caught fire on the night of February thirteenth, nineteen twenty-three. Um, and a lot of the second story was damaged. A lot of the interior was, uh, damaged. So here we have a picture from our museum collections of that building on fire and then some of the aftermath of the fire. Um, so after the fire, um, oh, if you want to stay on that other side, thank you. Um, so after that fire, the, the railroad companies did not want to spend the money for a new building for our community. But, uh, city council, the Ogden Chamber of Commerce, and many, many of the citizens of Ogden worked together and petitioned the railroad companies to build us a new building. Um, and on the, during the day of February twenty-sixth, nineteen twenty-three, um, the, the rail companies were persuaded with the death of one of the workers, um, uh, at the building site, uh, due to the fire. Um, so after the, after that, we got our new building, which is the building you've known and recognized today. Um, so they started building this building in the spring of nineteen twenty-four, um, and it was completed on November twenty-second, nineteen twenty-four. Uh, this is the date we're celebrating as the one hundred year milestone, um, coming up pretty fast. You can see these, uh, uh, young women, uh, inaugurating the station.
Ask a question.
Yeah.
Uh, just, just the history of it. Was any of the old station it utilized or would they build onto something that was left or was there, was it just a total loss and they scraped the ground and started over again?
Um, they did, they did, uh, uh, raise the rest of the building. There are a few pieces left of the building. Um, there's some foundation work and things like that.
Just wondered, right?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, no problem. Um, so this building not only turns a hundred, but it has lived a hundred years since then. Um, so in nineteen seventy-one, the last Union Pacific train came to Union Station. Um, and very quickly we realized we wanted to do something more with this station to make it, uh, a heart of a community. Um, so in nineteen seventy-eight, we had our grand reopening after years of renovations and it was opened as a community center and a museum, um, and has, uh, hosted people for the last forty-five years. Um, you could, so you can see the passenger canopy is being taken out in preparation for its new role.
All right. So we've been asked, and I'm sure there's some buzz in the community, what is Union Station doing to celebrate the centennial? Um, and again, this is kind of a short, a short list of what we've got coming, coming up and what to expect. Um, we've broken it down into a few different sections, just to kind of explain. Um, one of the, one of the cool things is we have this new centennial branding. We've got a branding guide, um, that'll help guide, uh, a consistent message throughout the year. So a lot of our events and programs that are, that are planned are all very unique. And so we don't want to just throw out there, you know, different posters and different events and just look like a whole, you know, kitchen sink of dishes. So we, we wanted to tie everything together because some of it is our, our traditional historical programming that we do yearly. And then we've added, um, or enhanced and, but we still wanted to have a consistent look and feel so that people know as they're coming in, it doesn't matter what day they're in the station, starting next week, it will be a full year of celebration, um, in commemoration of the hundred year anniversary. So this is our new brand and you guys all got a new sticker today and, um, our branding guide. And then you'll see a lot of marketing, um, pop up, um, starting next week. And then just throughout the year, um, we hope to kind of place the celebration across, you know, as many and, and reach as many areas that we can. Um, some of those are printed materials. Um, Hope's already written a couple of articles.
I, I have. So, um, we have a photo essay coming out in the, in the summer twenty twenty-four, um, Utah Historical Quarterly, which is where all of the local historians, uh, commemorate and write history articles. So that will be coming out in September twenty twenty-four. Um, and then we, as well, we have, uh, a more general audience of the, the Ogden City Magazine, uh, talking about the centennial as well.
And that's coming out in the next edition. Um, and you'll see our website, um, listing the activities and opportunities to come and celebrate with us. Um, of course, social media banners, um, downtown. Um, we're going to have our new, um, logo or our centennial logo posted on our water tower for the year. Um, and then also we are pursuing the opportunity to build a new Christmas Village Cottage because the old Union Station one is no longer. Um, we'll also have, um, a series of retail items. You guys all got a sticker today and we'll have more to come that we'll be handing out at, at different events as, um, swag and also, um, opportunities in our gift shop to purchase some items. And then as we get to the events, um, there's a, a collection of twenty-one events across the, the entire year. And the, the way that we kind of stepped back and looked at it in a whole, um, was across the full year, we wanted to have kind of a big splash about once a quarter so that we're not, um, you know, making one part of, part of the year really heavy with events and then kind of having it quiet out. So we, we looked at the year as a whole. We plugged in the events that we already do are really great programming because we don't want to ignore that. And then we also added, um, some touches with some new events that, that celebrate the milestones of the building and as well as events that celebrate our culture and our people. Um, so you'll see kind of a collection of those throughout this section. Um, and again, there's twenty-one programmed events. Nine are, um, new and centennial specific. So it's something that you only see once, um, this year. And then the other nine are, are traditional programmed events that are going to be enhanced and celebrated for the hundred year. And then there's an additional three that are a ramp, three Saturdays. Um, so these are some of the bigger splash ones that you'll see, um, across the full year. Um, starting with the invitation that's on your table today, um, we have a, an exhibit that will be up, um, from November twenty-second all the way through November twenty-second. So this is an opportunity for the community to come in and read and experience the history of Union Station and its people. Um, and that ribbon cutting is next week on Wednesday. You're all invited, um, to attend that at twelve o'clock. And then we'll have, um, extended hours that day where the museums will be free to the public. And then we also have some community activities. Um, but that exhibit is, um, fantastic and it takes up the entire lobby. It's almost a thousand square feet of print. So if we look a little frazzled, um, but we're excited to launch it next week. Um, and then, uh, Mara had a really good idea a few months ago in our, in one of our first meetings about, um, these, this programming. It was to kind of color code it because it, like I said, it looks like a long list of events, but it's really kind of peppered throughout the, throughout the year with big ones, little ones, some new, some old. Um, and so the color coding on that, um, is basically the, the annual programming that we'll be doing anyway is that lighter color peach. And then partner programming such as the Hostlers Railroad Model, that's a mouthful. Hostlers Model Railroad Festival will be in its fifty-first year, and that's an annual event that we host at Union Station. So as you see those partner events, they're kind of in that medium orange. And then the centennial specific ones that are one time only are noted there as the darker. So that's what the color coding is all about. Um, so we'll, we'll be hosting the Hostlers again, um, in March. And then in May, um, our Living Heritage Festival, um, Hope, if you want to elaborate on that one a little bit.
Yeah. So, uh, the Living Heritage Festival has been something that we've done for the last ten years. Um, it is a multicultural festival to, uh, really drive home the point that, you know, Union Station should be the first stop that people think of when they think of the people of Ogden. So we want our Union Station to be a place where all of our community can come. And this is an opportunity to celebrate all of those people who call Ogden home.
Great. And then in May, um, this is a special ceremony that we'll have. Um, there is a cornerstone on the front of the building that was laid in nineteen twenty-four and, um, everything that we can tell without, um, actually opening it ourselves is that there would be a, a time capsule inside. And so we'll, um, have a special ceremony um, honoring the day that that was laid. And that photo that you see there is the actual photo of the day that that cornerstone was on a crane and being placed in the building. So, yeah, it's kind of hard to see, but, um, so that's definitely one of our signature, you know, dates that we'll all want to honor together. Um, and then the roaring twenties experience is something that we're exploring, um, trying to recreate the opportunity for people to experience what it was like in the nineteen twenties. Um, and then get your tickets is one of those milestone events, celebrating one of the milestones of, of the building itself. And it was the day the first ticket was sold after the building was done. And then, um, the, the end of the year celebration, um, the one hundred year actual anniversary is November twenty-second, twenty twenty-four. And we'll have a weekend celebration around that. So. Um, I have a spreadsheet that shows everything, but it's in there somewhere, but it's not, it's not conflicting with the parade or Thanksgiving. Luckily a lot of our dates kind of fell, yes, fell on.
Off the top of my head, I believe that November twenty-second and twenty-third is a week off from Thanksgiving in twenty twenty-four.
All right. And then, oh, did I go backwards? And then some of our secondary events are, are noted here. Um, I'll let Hope elaborate on the multicultural festival. Um, that's a little different format this year because of the centennial.
Yeah. So this is a program that we've done for the last several years, at least five or six years, um, of celebrating some of the, the holidays that, uh, the people in Ogden celebrate and recognizing that to celebrate with our community. Um, so this year we're making it bigger than ever before. We're having all, um, six different holidays recognized on, on one day at the Union Station. Um, we've invited, invited community representatives to come and talk a little bit more about their holiday as well as do some hands-on family programming to get people in the, in the holiday spirit.
And then want to touch on the Mercy Car?
Oh, yes. Um, we're also very pleased, um, in Feb-, on February twenty-second, that we will be celebrating the seventy-fifth anniversary of the Mercy Car. Um, so that anniversary is the date that it arrived in Utah. Um, so the history of the Mercy Car is that, um, in nineteen forty-seven, the people of Utah put together, um, food and supplies, resources for the people of France. Um, and that went to France in nineteen forty-seven. Um, so in nineteen forty-nine, um, seventy-five years ago next year, um, the people of France sent back this train to say thank you for that assistance and that aid. Um, so Utah's car arrived on February twenty-second, nineteen, or sorry, nineteen forty-nine. And, uh, we, we'll be very pleased to be talking, celebrating that seventy-fifth anniversary with, with our local veterans groups as well as other community partners.
And then a few of the milestone, um, dates of the building of the station itself are noted here. Um, Strong Foundations was the day the first concrete was poured. Um, and it's amazing to me that they started in April and finished it.
That's what I was thinking when you said those dates, I was like, that's very fast.
Double check the years there because they built it in less than a year. It's crazy. Um, and then May is the building blocks. That's the day the first bricks were laid and then the day that they actually completed it, um, in September. Um, and then kind of going back, um, we're partnering with the Golden Spike, um, the Spike One Fifty Group. Wow, that's a typo. It says Spike One. Oh, it's fifty fifth. Yeah. So, um, we are partnering with the Spike One Fifty Group. They're doing some whistle stop, stop tours. If you haven't seen any of those press releases from the state or the Spike One Fifty Group, but they have a forty-foot monument that they'll be installing just outside of Brigham City. And it's a huge golden spike and all four sides of it have been, um, crafted to, to commemorate the, the golden spike.
I think I saw some newspaper, of course.
Yeah. So there's a, a few, a few stop tours and we're one of them. So we'll, um, we'll celebrate with them and that spike will be viewable by audiences to come and see outside the Union Station. And then we'll have some celebrations surrounding that, that date as well. And then of course, um, in November, we always host the Dia de los Muertos event and that'll be the sixth annual. And in addition to, um, kind of one day programmed events, um, we also have some exhibits and programs that are more, um, more of a long term. So they might be up for a month or even a year. Um, so these are opportunities, um, that we've noted that people can, can come and celebrate us. And the Union State celebrate with us and the Union Station. Um, one of those being the heart of Ogden. You want to tell just a little bit more detail about that?
Yes. So this is our, uh, biggest exhibit for the year. It is going up next week. You guys are all invited to the ribbon cutting ceremony. Um, and this is a twenty-one panel exhibit that talks not only about the Union Station's history, but also how the Union Station has created opportunity and changed Ogden, uh, forever. So really if I had say one key message for, um, for that exhibit would be that Ogden begins here at Union Station, um, and celebrating that history. Um, we're very excited to highlight different people that have called Ogden home over the last one hundred years as well as the history of the building itself. Yeah, yeah. Um, so in addition to the physical exhibit that they can see at the station, um, all the way from November twenty-second till the end of the year in twenty twenty-four. Um, we've partnered with an app called Urban Archive to create some self-guided tours around the city. So this uses some of the photos that are in our, in our collection, um, and people can, uh, get to know our city's history a little bit more on their own time using their smart devices. Um, so we are going to be releasing several self-guided tours throughout the years. Um, two of those really important ones are going to be, um, a tour of the building itself, recognizing the centennial. Um, different facets of the building's architecture and historical, um, significance. Um, we're also, uh, creating a roaring twenties self-guided tour. So people can see all of the different buildings and the ways that Ogden was blossoming throughout the nineteen twenties, including the Bigelow Hotel, the Egyptian Theater, and a lot of these other big, uh, landmarks in Ogden. Um, in addition to the, uh, self-guided tours as well, we are partnering with a few local community members to create a Chinese railroad workers' history exhibit, which will be, uh, at the gallery at the station, um, for two months. And so we've partnered with a few, uh, uh, Chinese railroad worker descendant groups and things like that to create this, uh, Chinese railroad worker history exhibit.
And a couple of our, um, smaller events that are traditional to Union Station is the Free Ramp Saturdays, and those have already been scheduled for these dates. Um, that's something that Ramp funds every year to allow, uh, families to come in for free on those days. And so we'll kind of bolster that with centennial programming and educational opportunities as part of those free summer Saturday events. And then another partnership program is the Community Art Show, and that's with our own Ogden Arts Team. Um, we're in our full second year of that show and it's become extremely, extremely successful. Um, our goal with that, when we started it, um, we actually sat down with Union Station staff when they weren't my staff and we, we said, what can we do to, you know, to bring people into the station and to have art accessible at their level and not be intimidated by a gallery or, um, you know, something that, that makes people, you know, feel and experience art and, and even, um, bring their art as their own in and have it shown in a public space. And it's been extremely successful. So we're really proud of that. And as that quarter's show comes about at the, at the end of that year, um, the theme for that year, or the theme for that quarter is where Ogden begins. And it will be celebrating Union Station and its history. And that'll be on exhibit. And if that wasn't enough. Like I said, it seems like a lot, but some of them are, you know, smaller and then some of them are a little bigger. But, um, again, I, I did mention that we would like to bring back the Union Station, um, Christmas Village Cottage. It was a staple for many, many years. And after that many years out in the snow and elements, it finally saw its day. And so that's something that we're pursuing, um, bringing back, having built and then having it brought back, um, to, to, um, be in Christmas Village in that year. Um, and then, um, as part of the exhibit that we're opening this next week, the Hostlers Model Railroad Group have, um, graciously built us a Union Station mini-model, um, that's like on, on wheels. So it'll be part of the main exhibit and it'll be a progressive model. And so as you see it next week and you see it week after week, it will actually change kind of like the growing of Union Station itself. And so you'll see that progressive model happening in our lobby as part of that exhibit. Um, and we appreciate their, their help in building that. And then do you want to talk about the oral histories?
One of my favorite parts of this centennial project is that we have hired an oral historian to interview fifteen community members about their memories at Union Station and what that means to them. Thirteen of those will be featured in a video. Thirteen of those will be featured in a video included with the exhibit. So people can get to know people who have used the station, people who have worked in the station, people who remember the station at different points in its, in its life. Um, so fifteen total oral histories will be recorded. Um, they will be shown in a video during the centennial exhibit as well as they will be transcribed and recorded for the Union Station's permanent archives as well. So that fifty down, years down the line, our community members can see what Union Station means to us.
And that's a typo. There's twelve videos, so it'll be shown in the exhibit, right? Not two?
Oh, thirteen.
Oh, thirteen, okay. That's, that's my typo, so. Um, and then we are pursuing, we're looking into, um, having a musical composition wrote just specifically and uniquely for Union Station celebrating that and Ogden's history. Um, that's something that we're looking into and then having it performed on that last, um, centennial celebration date, so. And we're, we've reached out to many partners and we'll be working with you all and, uh, every city department and many, many partners across the state and our local Ogden community. And that's it.
Well, that's quite a lot. Um, any questions or comments from council members?
Who's working on the, the, the little deal for the Christmas Village?
We have, we haven't found a, a contractor for that yet.
You look for volunteers?
M- maybe.
Sounds like you're volunteering.
Like, you know, I, I love woodworking and that kind of thing, so I, I'd probably be interested.
I'll have Stacy send you the specs.
Very cool. There you go. One good reason to come and present.
I'm assuming the Mercy Car will be fully restored when, on that day. Do we have an update on where we are with that?
The Mercy Car will actually leave after its birthday, so they, they need about a year to restore it completely. And so, um, it's not public yet who, who received the, um, the award to do that work, but we're, we're working through the contract on that. So we, we have found a, a contractor company that is qualified to do that work. Um, but we're going to keep it around so that it can be here on, yeah, on a seventy-fifth anniversary party, and then it'll go, um, and be restored and it'll come back.
Okay.
Yeah.
Christie did that. Did the funding that we provided for that include the enclosure for it?
Yes.
To protect it?
Yes, that in addition to the, the donation from the foundation. So together, those two funding sources will cover the restoration and a cover.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
A cover or an enclosure?
A cover.
Okay.
To protect it, but, I mean, if we can get it in there to completely close it, it's an option. We don't really have, we haven't secured a contractor for that yet.
Okay, gotcha.
That was kind of like step two.
All right, thanks.
Yeah. Awesome. Thank you so much.
Sure.
Love it. That's a lot of stuff going on. Okay, up next we have Barton Briarly, our planning manager, um, to talk with us about a proposed street vacation in the northern portion of Third Street between Porter Avenue and Jefferson Avenue.
Hey.
Welcome.
Thank you, and thank you for letting me go right after Christie, so. Just as exciting, I'm sure. So this is a request from, uh, Steve Diamond and Five D Development to vacate a portion of Third Street right away between Porter Avenue and Jefferson Avenue. Okay, so it's the block between Second Street and Third Street and Jefferson and Porter. Uh, this was a former church, and, uh, the church is no longer in service. Has the property's been sold and the church demolished. And, uh, that's the source of this request for the street vacation. So the request is to realign Third Street. It's kind of funky the way it is now. There's actually these two. There's actually these two little parcels that are south of the Third Street right away that, uh, were owned by the church. And Third Street actually jogs here and on the other side, so it's not a straight road. So the request would be to realign Third Street to move it to the south so that the Third Street would be dedicated, the, the two little almost useless parcels would be dedicated as the street. The street would be re-lined and then they're requesting that a little bit the existing right away be vacated, and then that would be incorporated into the parcel that was the church. And the purpose of doing that would be so that all the street would be on the south side of the parcel, and then this would be incorporated into a future subdivision request. Uh, and you might recall the council did a rezoning of this to R one five to allow basically five thousand square foot lots and there. This is what the street looks like. On this side would be, this side would be the former church, and this is the right away. And then there's the two parcels over here, and this is looking at it from the other direction. The church on this side, and then the two kind of useless parcels on that side. So the top diagram here shows the existing conditions and you see the jog where Third Street, you're traveling down the road, you've got to make a curve at this intersection, which is not what any engineer likes to see. And then it kind of actually curves back a little bit on this side. And there's actually, uh, ninety-degree parking for the church on the, the north side that's in the public right of way. This shows what they'd like to do is smooth out that curve, get rid of that, uh, ninety-degree parking, build new curb and gutter here. And this will be the section that they would be vacating, and this would be part of the subdivision. And then realign it the street a little bit to the south so that on the east end it's less of a radical curve. And then the east end it would line up with the existing Third Street here. And then this would be dedicated right of way. So it'd actually just be a very wide right of way on the south side. One of the issues, yes.
So, that's one thing I've always kind of had a question, how that's really going to work. Um, so those parcels, they, rather than making them a remnant parcel, are they, are they being added to the property that, of the people that live to the south? Or are they, how, how's all, all that supposed to work?
It would just be dedicated right of way.
It's just, okay, so it's still going to remain what it is currently, other than that little corner it looks like?
Well, they're currently privately owned parcels and they, these would become part of the street right of way.
Okay, it's not going to change side yard setbacks and different things like that for those, for those, uh, those folks of it.
Yeah, it would in that this is on the south side. There are two parcels with single-family homes that face the side streets here. Um, this one still has a pretty good side setback, and you see this one is existing, is very close to that. So right now, this is an interior side yard. And with that, it would actually become a s- side yard facing a street. So this would all be right of way. There'd still be room there. This would become a side yard facing a street. And so, yes, this lot would become non-conforming, and this drive approach would be, well, this one that actually wouldn't change a whole lot because this still has to line up with the street. So there'd still be space between there, but this would become the street. So, yes, that would become non-conforming, that house would.
Yeah, I've been going to drive by, but I just never have. I'll, I'll make a point to drive by there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, another issue on this is you have an irrigation, uh, head wall here right at the intersection. In order to realign that intersection and have it line up, this will need to be located. This is the line irrigation canal. So this will all have to be reconstructed. And, uh, so the planning commission's recommending approval of this with several conditions. One is that they reach an agreement with the line irrigation company on relocating that structure. Uh, they need to accommodate the driveway from that house that's right on Porter Avenue. Um, they will have to get final approval of construction drawings. They do have some preliminary construction drawings. Uh, but this is something that the applicant will have to build that street for that. And so they'll have to do a financial guarantee for it, and, uh, the plat will dedicate additional land for the right of way on the south and vacated on the north, and then combine that vacated property with the land to the north. There are some trees along the south side that'd be preserved. And then, um, engineering was, okay, not requiring a sidewalk on the south side, but, uh, neither needs to be a sidewalk or some sort of hard-walking surface on the south side of the street. So that's the planning commission's recommendations.
Was there any public comment at the planning commission meeting? Uh, I'm particularly wondering if those residents that are right adjacent have anything to say about it?
Uh, there really wasn't.
So is the applicant responsible for the line irrigation company's construction? But that's got to be an agreed-upon methodology and outcome and so on?
Yeah, they would be required to do the, the relocation, do the reconstruction and all to, since it's the irrigation companies can alter their specifications and get their approval.
How about the, how about curb and gutter?
Uh, they will have to do curb and gutter both sides of the street.
Questions? I don't see any. Thank you so much.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Hmm, no, thank you. Thank you. Um, up next we have Justin Sorensen. Um, while you're up next on the next three items, welcome, Justin, um, our deputy comptroller to talk to us about Business Depot Ogden Lease Revenue Ordinance and then Fiscal Year Twenty Twenty Three to Twenty Four Budget Amendment. And, well, two of those, so we'll get to those after this one.
Thank you, Chair. I appreciate being here with you tonight to talk about, um, a couple of items. Um, the first one being, um, an amendment to the BDO lease revenue. Um, so over the years, we've had to, or it's been brought forward to amend this ordinance. Um, the revenue that's received at, at BDO, um, at how that money is distributed, um, kind of creating a, a list of where we would fund, what we would fund first. Um, the current ordinance, which was amended in, in April of twenty twenty one, that was the last time that we, we amended it, listed, we, we had added Marshall White that year, uh, to where we would fund a million dollars, um, and set aside, uh, for whatever we were going to end up doing with Marshall White. Um, it also included renewing the, the, the Quality Neighborhoods for another five years, um, and along with the other items that are currently listed there. The proposal, uh, with amending the ordinance, uh, right now would be to, the first one is to adjust the, the Marshall White to, instead of it being a million dollars going set aside to be, uh, um, up to two million dollars, whi- which would go towards the debt service, um, for the bonds, uh, for the Marshall White Center, and that would be for, committed for fiscal year beginning this year and go through fiscal year twenty forty-nine, um, to be able to, to pay those bonds. The other one is an adjustment to the language to say a payment of up to a million dollars for the CBD mall debt, which will be, uh, paid off in twenty twenty-seven. So that's up to, not necessarily that full amount, but it's, the language allows that if we need to, up to that amount. Um, the RD, the Quality Neighborhoods is, um, still in there, um, which would be through fiscal year twenty twenty-six. Uh, we've also added in the Union Station Property Purchase, uh, payment that is from fiscal year twenty-four to fiscal year thirty for seven hundred and eighty-three thousand. So that's also been added as a, an item that would be committed from B O lease revenue. Um, one other adjustment in the language is be, currently it talks about where for public art and, um, our art maintenance, we would fund a hundred thousand a year, limited to five hundred thousand in that fund. The proposal is to, to slightly increase that to where it's a hundred thousand for public art and twenty-five hundred separately for art maintenance annually. So a little bit of a change there where instead of it being a hundred thousand, up to a hundred thousand combined, and we're, we're separating those and, and we'd like to do twenty-five hundred for art maintenance and then a hundred thousand for public art. The other, the other items, um, the, most of these ones listed here aren't changing, um, eight through twelve. But, um, seven would be, we used to fund, um, the, our annual gar- arts grants, um, through BDO, BDO lease revenue, we would transfer that to the general fund. Um, I believe it was two years ago, we were able to fund that in the general fund. But what we had wanted to add in here that if we needed to, um, if, if we needed to find a place in the general fund that we couldn't fund it, that we could use B O lease revenue to, as a transfer for that. So that has been added in the, in the language. Um, everything else is the same, um, as it currently is. So this is a, um, a schedule of what it would look like right now. I know it's kind of small, but this, this goes through and talk, um, shows, and it should be in your packet, uh, what our estimated revenues are that we would receive, um, at BDO from fiscal year twenty-five through, uh, fiscal year twenty, or twenty forty-nine, and shows the commitments as the ordinance currently shows with Quality Neighborhoods, the CBD mall debt, uh, the, the Union Station Property Purchase, uh, the Marshall White debt, and then Public Arts as well as, um, the Community Plan, uh, funding. Um, and then also Critical Project Contingency. And then from there, it shows you how that fund balance would grow. Obviously, each year we, when we cut, bring the budget to you, part of the budget includes how we would appropriate the rest of those funds for projects. So is there any questions on this item?
Um, I pointed this out in the packet, but, um, this does not include the bonds that will be issued towards the end of this year, so there will be, need another amendment later neck, or early next year to include that payment, uh, from here.
Any other question?
Just with the, I, I mean, this may be premature to ask on the Quality Neighborhoods Initiative ending in twenty twenty-six. Is there discussion about continuing that beyond and how that might look? I don't know.
At this.
And that's probably maybe not, you're not probably the person.
I know Brandon's here.
Yeah.
We, he, Brandon would like it to be more money and to go on forever, I'm sure. Uh, but it has been traditionally five years that, you know, just so that can be evaluated at the end of the year.
Yeah.
At the end of that time period.
Yeah, so this is the, this is the second round of five years of, that's been committed for Quality Neighborhoods, so.
Thanks so much. Next item?
Next item, all right. So the next item for you is a, a proposed budget opening. To, let's see. So this is a, a budget opening proposed to, um, a use of fund balance in the amount of one point five million that we would transfer out of, out of the city to the Municipal Building Authority. Um, yeah, we received four million dollars from, um, GOED, the Governor Office of Economic Development in a, in, as part of, um, the ARPA funds. Um, and so we've already appropriated two and a half million that was, went towards, um, the Wonder Block. This is another, uh, a million and a half that we're, uh, proposing to, to transfer to the Municipal Building Authority that would there be to help set up a reserve, um, for the construction of the parking tower. So that's what this budget opening is, is to a use of fund balance of one point five million and then transferring that out. Any questions with that? And I, there, I, later on in the work session, there actually is another budget opening for the Municipal Building Authority. If it's okay, I can talk about that one now as well, since these, they go together.
I don't mind.
Okay. So with that, with that transfer would be to, a transfer in, so this would be a, a, a budget opening in the Municipal Building Authority to transfer in the one and a half million. And the way that that would go into the Municipal Building Authority is we put one, just over one point one million would be appropriated and set inside it as a construction reserve in the, in the MBA. Um, if it ends up not being needed at a later time, we could look to reappropriate that for another use. Uh, the, the rest of that one point five million, which is three hundred and forty thousand, along with, uh, we want to appropriate through seven hundred and sixty thousand out of fund balance in the MBA. So that total is one point one million, and that would be, uh, those ones would be appropriated to, to be used as part of the investment and the development of that Wonder Block. So that's what that money would go for. So that total appropriation in the MBA is, uh, two point two six million. Are there any questions regarding that?
Would the, uh, the Municipal Building Authority would have to re, uh, approve the release of those funds in a, as per the reserve?
Yes.
Okay, yeah.
No more questions on that item. Thank you.
All right. And then the last one, um, I will talk about the, the, the budget appro- budget opening with it, and then, All right. And then the last one, um, I will talk about the 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 budget appro- budget opening with it. And then um, Sarah Mace and and Taylor Nielsen are both here to add some additional um, information regarding uh, what we're doing with this. So um, we have a an an opportunity to um, with a a company coming that wants to come to to B D O. And with that requires um, some improvements to the water and sewer um, systems out there for capacity. And so what we're appro- what we're proposing is that there there, we've already signed the agreement that they would repay us um, for the cost of what will, what it will cost to upgrade the the water and the sewer out there. And so the the budget opening for you tonight is we need to appropriate uh, just over three point two million um, out of fund balance in the water fund. And they are als- they're also funding uh, ten percent of the upfront costs. So we're, so between the fund balance and that four hundred and twenty-two thousand, that three point seven million is needed to do water improvements um, out in that area. Um, there's also a need to do sewer improvements, but we've already got funding in the sewer uh, master plan uh, projects that we can to be able to afford that. And that costs is about a half a million. And then there's also with that a repayment plan, which is scheduled to start in January. And so as part of this budget opening, we want to appropriate the the repayment that will happen from January to June of next year for both the water fund and the sewer fund. Um, the the amount that we'll receive from the for water will be uh, just over ninety-five thousand and in wa- and sewer just um, just shy of fifteen thousand. And that those, the money that they are paying back that scheduled uh, that debt schedule, that note schedule does include interest that they will be repaying um, along with the payment. So with that.
Can you tell me, so there's a lot of they's and their theirs and who are they and who are there? And can you explain whose repayment and sorry, I I I'm not following along very well.
So the 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 business that is that we're working with is Yaya Foods. And I was gonna have Taylor and Sarah, they'll be coming up to talk more about why we're doing this and and the benefits of it. So I, we can invite them to come up now and.
Yeah, please come on up. We have two extra chairs.
Wait, wait. That's great. That I I that's I I'm just trying to figure out who they are going to repay and is it the the company? Is it?
Yes, so so. Sorry. So yes, Yaya Foods is is going to be repaying the amount of that that the city is expending to do these improvements. And those that money will be returned back to the to the water and sewer funds.
Thanks. It just it it, yeah, just to make it more clear.
Yeah. And and the the repayment schedule is over eight years. So there's a, there's a, in the packet, there is a schedule that shows um, how that those payments will go. Um, it starts in January and goes through uh, twenty thirty-one, I believe. So.
Please do. Um, Marsha, did you have another question?
No, it just, when you're just listening and it's, you know, it's it's just uh, you you hear different things. So I just want to make sure we're being clear.
Perfect. Go ahead.
Um, what are we making there that, or what are they gonna make that requires so much water?
I'll I'll invite Sarah and Taylor. They can come up and explain a little bit more about what what they're doing and why we're needing to do those improvements out there. So.
Welcome. And please introduce yourself for those online that may not know who you are.
Good evening. I'm Sarah Mace, Business Development Manager.
And I'm Taylor Nielsen, the Assistant City Engineer.
All right. Well, we are excited to provide some additional information about the the project that Justin just introduced for this budget opening. Um, this is a project that we think has some great benefits for the community, both from an economic development perspective and a uh, public services perspective. And um, we've had a really great team effort and and had a a good opportunity to collaborate across city departments to put this project together. Um, because it has benefits kind of across the board for us. Um, so just to provide a little background and answer the question of what does Yaya Foods do? Um, some of you might remember an announcement from back in twenty nineteen. Um, a company called Oatly announced that they would open a manufacturing facility at Business Depot Ogden making oat milk and then other oat-based, non-dairy food and beverage products. Um, so they've been operating out at B D O since then. And just earlier this year in twenty twenty-three, um, Oatly entered into a manufacturing partnership with Yaya Foods. So Yaya Foods is a uh, they're a major beverage manufacturer and packager. Um, they're based in Toronto, Canada, and they they've been operating since two thousand and eight. So um, thank you. So under this new partnership, Oatly is going to continue producing its proprietary oat base that they use to make the food and beverage products. Um, but Yaya will be actually manufacturing those products at scale. Um, and then it's worth mentioning too. So along with that manufacturing partnership, there is actually an asset purchase agreement. So Yaya Foods purchased the assets of Oatly, um, including the assets they they have here in Ogden. Um, and they they did the purchase of the assets in Ogden for um, seventy-two million dollars and a fourteen point four million dollar credit for Oatly to use those shared assets in the future. Um, so we've been working with Yaya Foods and and they are interested in expanding their operations here in Ogden. That would include um, the Oatly brand products that are being produced there now. And the expansion has some great projected economic impacts for our region. So that would include the retention of the hundred jobs that exist at the plant today. Um, the creation of three hundred new jobs. And these are well-paying jobs in our manufacturing industry. They're looking, on average, the annual wages would be about sixty-seven thousand dollars before benefits. And that's actually about a hundred and twenty-two percent of our average annual wages um, across all all jobs here in Ogden. Um, and then the project would also include a ninety-two million dollar capital investment, and about half of that would be invested in new equipment for the facility. So as we started talking with Yaya Foods about this expansion project earlier in the year, one of the things that came up is that um, the expansion is going to increase their water and sewer needs. Um, and so when we learned of that, um, we reached out to public services to see, you know, is this something that we can accommodate? Does it make sense for us to continue pursuing the project? Um, so I'll turn the time over now to Taylor, and he's gonna talk a little bit about our our water capacity and those infrastructure improvements.
Thank you. Thank you, Council, for the opportunity to be here this evening. Um, one of the most important items that we always evaluate when we look at new developments and other items coming in is we call it source, storage, and capacity. And we want to make sure that Ogden has all three. And so those are the master plans that we appreciate Council's support on. It's it's a help with all the projects that we've been doing uh, with guidance to make sure that we have the availability to expand and do projects like this. So what we did is we went back and we looked at what was going to be their anticipated use when they are totally built out was one point four million gallons per day is what they are anticipating. Uh, the wastewater, which we were, again, these are estimates, we were thinking they're around eight hundred and nineteen thousand gallons per day. And as we were trying to evaluate the impacts on our system, we took those numbers, we modeled them, and we modeled them all the way back up and down our system to try and see where the impacts would be. Uh, the first question was, is do we have enough enough source? So when we were looking through some of our old master plans, we went all the way back to twenty thirteen. We're uh, looking at what we call peak day demand. How much water do we use at most on any given day? And normally that's the summer days when it's the hottest, when the most things are coming through. And we were somewhere between twenty-nine and thirty million gallons per day. Because of projects that we've been doing and undertaking, and because of the assistance we've been able to receive uh, from you as the council to move forward on a lot of these projects, that number actually with all the development that's been happening is going down. So our peak day demand now is actually less than what it was in twenty thirteen. And that exact one that we were down, so when we did it in July of this year, we were at twenty-six point two million gallons per day. So you picture, you take that in the summer, we're we're down between three and four million gallons from what we used to do because of uh, different capital projects we've been able to invest in and take. So that means we have uh, some additional water to ensure that if we can take it, we can sell it to customers and consumers, we can ensure that we're able to have revenue and other streams that are ongoing. The other item we see this as a benefit for, and and that's the line item two, or excuse me, line item three is we're able to diversify our portfolio a little bit to ensure that we have additional large water users to try and keep our rates down, to try and make sure that there's money available for future capital projects that we need to do. So it's great to have a partner that's willing to come into the community to invest in the infrastructure and to help us ensure that we have longevity in our system and can to continue to allow us to move those resources forward. So the the, that was one of the questions that I uh, I know we heard early from Councilmember White, which we appreciate is that there are infrastructure improvements that would be coming from Yaya in the form of water improvements that would be coming to the city. That they were going to invest three point seven million, and then there was going to be an additional five hundred thousand that would come in sewer improvements. And so we see these as an added benefit to our community and especially to our water system to continue to help us move forward.
Um, so the, oh, sorry, go.
Don't, if you're not done, I'll play.
Um, so the way we've got this structured is through a reimbursement agreement with Yaya Foods, where the city would fund the capital costs of those water and sewer improvements um, at a total project cost of four point two million. Um, Yaya would pay ten percent of that cost upfront, and then they would reimburse the remaining cost over eight years. And that term is just set up to align with their um, remaining lease term at B D O. Um, and and that reimbursement would come with interest. Um, it would also be secured by a guarantee from their parent company, and we've actually had the opportunity to review financial statements for Yaya Foods and the parent company. Um, we've done that working with finance and legal, and we're very comfortable with the financial position of the company and and their ability to repay. Um, I also wanted to note that one of the probably most important forms of support that we're providing to this project is through the expertise of our engineering division for project design and construction management. So um, our engineering division has done an absolutely amazing job on this project as far as running the models, designing the project, and doing all of that under a very um, very accelerated timeframe. Um, engineering would also manage the construction of the project, and that creates a pretty significant impact contribution of staff time and resources and um, is probably really the only reason that the project can be completed um, in a way that meets Yaya's project timeframes. Um, also wanted to mention that the project is um, approved for a state incentive as well. Um, this was actually just approved by the Governor's Office of Economic Opportunity last week. And they'll be providing a one point eight million dollar ed TIF tax credit for the project. Um, and the ed TIF is a post-performance tax credit. So basically, they're getting back um, twenty percent of the new state tax revenues that their project generates over the next ten years. Um, the state also approved a hundred and fifty thousand dollar um, industrial assistance grant, and that's going to support some of their job training costs on the front end of the project. Um, so just to kind of sum up, we're we're very excited about the benefits of this project. Um, we see this as a win-win for economic development and for um, our utility system here in the city. Um, with the job creation, the capital um, investment that we've talked about. And then, as Taylor mentioned, diversifying our portfolio um, with another large customer kind of adds some stability. So if something were to happen um, to one of our existing industrial users, it's a big customer, this kind of protects us from that by um, by by providing another customer that's um, paying water fees to the city. Um, so that's kind of what we have, and we'll look forward to your questions.
I see that Councilmember Nadolski has.
Sorry, I'm excited.
No problem.
So let me get this straight. No TIF from us, no cash incentive. They're paying for the infrastructure including the interest on it. And we're getting a massive user to the system? So how do we get more of these? Cause if you look at the revenue from, I don't know, have you looked at how much revenue this will create in a year from that much usage?
We we've made some estimates, but nothing that we're probably comfortable with at this point.
Let's just say, I have no idea what the number is. It's gotta be big. But that's revenue that could go to debt obligation or a bond or a water line in the canyon. It's gotta be a chunk of the debt obligation. So no cost to the community. Upgrades in infrastructure, new revenues to pay for other upgrades. Great work. Like, wow.
Do you have a question?
Well, I I was just doing the math. And so they're trucking out three hundred thousand gallons of water every day in in their products. Is that their beverages or whatever? That sounds like a lot.
Yeah, that would, well, the assumption would probably more around six hundred thousand would be uh, leaving somehow either in product or as part of their manufacturing process.
Yeah, yeah, that's a lot.
Yeah, it'd be a fair amount.
That's a big operation.
And I think they've been awarded a sustainability, Oatly anyway, got an award for sustainability too. So I don't know how that fits into their whole manufacturing process.
Just to blow my mind a little bit more. And then we do more projects that save more water, create more capacity in the system. I mean, the the continual returns for Ogden are incredible. Good job.
I I came up to make that same comment, so I'm glad you did. So if you didn't, um, Councilmember Nadolski, if you didn't point out how um, incredibly beneficial this this is to the city and to bring in a business, you know, that enable a business to expand, that provides such a great economic opportunity for the city. Um, I wanted to just also acknowledge just the incredible teamwork that we had on the administrative side between C E D and Lisa Lindberg is here, but she wasn't speaking. So Sarah and Lisa and then Taylor and uh, Justin Anderson from our engineering department, um, really Jay and and Brandon Cooper, but everybody really pulled together. Um, we had, we made a a brief presentation to the state um, to to go Ed. Um, and we had Tej Flint was was there, who, former manager for Weber Basin Water, and actually really praising the city for how quickly we were able to come together to make the project happen. And I'll add one more benefit, um, just to put a little bit more icing on the cake, but the stormwater will actually contribute to water going into the Great Salt Lake. So it's not an entirely consumptive use. So we're able to uh, improve the water, we're able to treat the water, have it go through the process, and then the stormwater, um, well, actually, a lot of that will eventually make its way out to the Great Salt Lake. So it it just seemed like a lot of wins here with this project. And I'm really proud of the work that was done.
Any other questions? I don't know if Councilmember White has any questions or comments. Well, thank you all. Okay, well, that's the end of our uh, work ses- session, session agendas. Are any redevelopment agency, building authority or other business we have? Anything, let me introduce name?
We have a couple of things. Um, so just a reminder, tomorrow night is the joint work session with the planning commission. It uh, the agenda says it starts at five. We would encourage you to come early if you want to eat because it we're it's, we're gonna try and keep it right to an hour so that you can all go down to the Union Station event. Um, so we just encourage you to come early. We'll have it set up by five-ish. Uh, and then tomorrow we are meeting uh, with jointly as joint leadership. So if you have any agenda items, things that you'd like us to talk with the mayor and or mayor about, uh, just let me know.
Okay, now this double checking, is the agenda start at four, five thirty or five?
It says five thirty. That, the meeting starts at five thirty. We're just asking if you could come early to eat.
Perfect. That's what I have. Awesome. Thanks so much. Great, okay. Take our twelve minutes off. Thank you.